I'd like to welcome Billy Lowell, lead pastor with City Church, who will lead us in tonight's invocation.
Mr. Mayor, you'll differ. Let me pray. Father, thank you for today. God, thanks for the weather, for the change of seasons. God, thanks for this council. I pray, like we always do, that you would give them wisdom, that they would lead with integrity, grace, and character. God, we pray for our first responders, as we know that there's been so much going on lately, especially for the Roswell Police Department, but also for Alpharetta and Milton, that you would protect them. God, that they would know that they're supported. And Lord, as they protect us, I pray that you would just continually watch over them. So, Lord, we give this night to you. We ask for your blessings and discernment and wisdom in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, February 19th, 2025, to order. The city encourages you to review tonight's agenda carefully. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to Bernadette prior to the agenda being called. While the Midland Rules allow a speaker to turn their comment card up until Bernadette calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Bernadette, will you please call roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. I'll be happy to call roll for the February 19th, 2025 regular city council meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. As the mayor Protem mentioned, if you would like to make a public comment, then you are required to complete a public comment card before the agenda item is called. If you are representing an organization, a notarized affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. If you have not submitted your comment card, then please bring your cards to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. Mayor Protem and councils that I call this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Protem Janjakobis.
Present.
Councilmember Doug Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Juliette Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Cranmer.
Here.
And for the record, councilmember Andrea Verhof and Mayor Peyton Jameson are absent. Mayor Protem, you have a quorum. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The meeting agenda, I would like to add executive session to discuss personnel, land acquisition, and litigation. Is there a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from councilmember Kramer and a second from councilmember Johnson to approve the meeting agenda.
Okay.
All in favor. We should have put it up.
Voting should be open.
Bernadette, I forgot my password.
It was not in my instructions.
A visual hand cue will be satisfactory, as long as the clerk can get the requisite vote count, we're good.
I'm going old school, Bernadette.
You are my motion, so if you, I did yours for you, so I can handle that.
How come mine's not?
Did it work? It'll let me vote on your, it'll let me vote on your behalf, so if you raise your hand for me, I can handle recording it. Mine's not.
They're all, they've all been.
We're all recorded.
Have they all been approved?
Yes.
It's not showing up here. Okay. That passes unanimously. Bernadette, are there any general public comments?
Yes, Mayor Protem, we have one general public comment.
General public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor Protem and the city council to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. Please remember that this is not a time to engage the mayor Protem or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address and organization, if applicable, for the record. Bernadette, please announce.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As a reminder, general public comment allows that members of the public may speak for five minutes. I will announce when one minute remains, and I will notify the speaker when time has expired. Would Ms. Mary Kronk please come to the podium?
Good evening. Mary Kronk, 600 Hickory Mill Lane. My comments this evening are about the Deerfield Implementation Plan that Mr. Buschemi and his team are diligently working on, and it includes support for excellent suggestions that were made by council and the Planning Commission members during the joint work session. One of the goals of this project is to redevelop the corridor so that it reflects Milton's character. It is an appealing place to live and shop. These plans certainly do accomplish that. One of the other stated purposes of the plan is to increase our commercial tax base from its current 11%. At the joint work session, council members asked what the increase to the commercial tax base could realistically be if these plans were implemented, and I strongly support council having that data before you approve the plan. I believe you would want to ensure that these plans accomplish that goal of increasing the commercial tax base. And as a taxpayer, I would want the council to have all the information you need to make an informed decision about the plans. For that reason, I think council needs a comprehensive plan that addresses all of the other city departments that could be impacted by this plan. For example, would our existing police and fire safety departments, both staffing and equipment, be adequate to protect our city? Or would these plans necessitate increases in staff and/or equipment? Which was an excellent, excellent question posed by a member of the Planning Commission at the joint meeting. Would increases in city staff for code enforcement or other departments be required to implement the plan? And if so, I recommend that information be added to the plan to see the true effort on the part of city staff and taxpayers to bring this plan to life. In the design manual, in the section about streets, the document states a network of streets should be created to better, sorry, to develop better district connectivity. Are the new streets required to implement the plan, or are they optional? And if they're required, should Public Works be involved to give an indication of the number of streets required and the approximate cost to Milton taxpayers of those streets? The suggestion made at the joint work session to not allow TDRs to be used by developers in the Deerfield Plan and instead push for incentives is well worth exploring, with the end goal of getting the amenities that are shown in the plan paid for by the developers. Excellent questions were asked about how do we, what would be the maintenance of the amenities if the developers retain control? So would it be possible to add a bond or other financial stipulations to ensure the developers maintain these areas to Milton standards? People who gave input on the plan at the public meetings overwhelmingly want the amenities they saw. Are all of the amenities paid for directly by developers, or are they tied to developer incentives? If the cost of the amenities could fall on taxpayers, that should also be addressed by the plan. Conversely, if there are city departments that are not impacted, either staff or equipment by the plan, including that would be a strength of the plan to show there won't be any increases if this plan is implemented. And I think the city can also use this as an opportunity to clean up or strengthen some ordinances, like the TDR ordinances, to remove TDRs from being used for constrained land that cannot be built on. And that was another outstanding suggestion by council members, as well as a suggestion to not allow developers to purchase TDRs and only allow incentives for the amenities which will enhance the Deerfield area. And if you've driven through the area between Coles and Target, you'll notice that while the refuse collection sites have enclosures on all four sides, they are typically open on one side, which exposes the garbage dumpsters to everyone who drives or walks by. Since aesthetics are going to be such an important component of this plan, and it's extremely important that garbage isn't visible when you're walking or driving by, and you also want to have a pleasant experience. I also suggest the council consider amending UDC Section 2.3.5, Refuge Collection Areas, which states in part, "Refuse collection areas and receptacles must be enclosed on three sides with opaque walls. The fourth side must be a self-closing gate made from non-combustible materials." And it seems logical, based on this verbiage, that gates should be kept closed because it's a self-closing gate. But if you drive through there, those gates are not kept closed. If we added verbiage to say doors must be kept closed, maybe that would be a way to help improve the look of that area and for the future plan. Thank you for considering these suggestions and for your continued focus on asking questions in order to make the informed decisions that help keep Milton Milton.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem, that concludes general public comment.
Okay, moving on to this consent agenda. Bernadette, will you sound the items, please?
Absolutely. Item A is the approval of the February 3rd, 2025 regular city council meeting minutes. That's agenda item number 25039. Item B is approval of the February 10th, 2025 joint work session of the city council and planning commission meeting minutes. Agenda item number 25040. Item C is the approval of a services agreement with Prologix ITS LLC to install emergency equipment in the new police vehicles. Agenda item number 25041. Item D is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Geo Hydro Engineers, Inc. for preliminary subsurface exploration and geotechnical engineering evaluation at 300 Deerfield Parkway. Agenda item number 25042. And the final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a revised purchase agreement for 0.457 acres of temporary construction easement at 13450 Cogburn Road, North Park, from city of Alpharetta for the Big Creek Greenway Extension Project, PI 0015078. This purchase agreement was previously approved on May 6th, 2024, and it's agenda item number 25043. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember, councilmember Henny, and a second from councilmember Johnson. Please vote.
Voting is open.
Bernadette, I approve, yea.
Wait till I tell Tammy.
Am I the only one that's having trouble here?
Yeah, it's not going for you.
There it is.
It was a light touch.
There we go.
You got a barely touching.
It is unanimous. Moving on to reports and presentation items. Bernadette, please sound the first item.
That first reports and presentation item is a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day 2025 in Milton as Tree City USA. Our city arborist, Ms. Sandra Dewitt.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of city council. With the proclamation for Arbor Day tonight, I wanted to take a quick minute to make a few announcements. As you know, you've probably heard from a communications department that we have received our recognition as a Tree City USA for the 16th consecutive year in a row. And I would just like to take a minute to thank all of you for your continued support and dedication in making sure this happens every year and that we meet the criteria for this. Also, this Saturday is our Arbor Day celebration. So we will be celebrating at Mayfield Park, February 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. We will start over in the pavilion area where we will have Caribou Coffee and Hot Chocolate and Donuts from Bloom, so you won't be too cold. And then we will also have some storytelling with Todd Williamson from the Milton Branch Library. He is the branch manager there, and he will also bring some books to share, I think, with the kids. We will have a quick craft that the kids can do, followed by our tree planting of five trees at the corner of Baldwin and Mayfield. So I hope that everybody can attend, and we certainly invite everyone from the public there. We will also be giving away Willow Oak tree seedlings for people to take home and plant as well. Thank you.
I'd like to read the proclamation. Proclamation recognizing Arbor Day 2025 in Milton as a Tree City USA. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business area, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, the city of Milton has been recognized as a Tree City USA community each year since 2009. And whereas, the city of Milton and our citizens are committed to the stewardship of our natural resources. Now, therefore, we, the mayor Protem and the city council of the city of Milton, hereby recognize and proclaim for the year 2025, February 22nd, as Arbor Day and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to make Milton an even greater place to live, work, and raise a family. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of future generations, given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the 19th day of February, 2025.
Definitely, oh yeah, by all means. Usually you can, frankly, I have a fancy camera, but this is better. So, let's see. Three, I'll let you. Three.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations, Hannah.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, I failed. I've got three. I have an extra one, just in case someone else would like one. That's supposed to be in the picture?
You were fantastic. You should have brought a tree, though.
Forgot to give you the proclamation.
Forgot to give them out. Thanks for covering.
I was worried about this vote thing.
You're doing such a great job.
Okay, where are we here? Okay. Okay. Bernadette, please sound the next item.
That next item is the Deerfield Implementation Plan update. Our director of special projects, Mr. Bob Buschemi.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. It's almost amazing to think 16 years. Going fast. Amazing where the city was and where it's been now and how it's growing. It's kind of a nice, nice story. So that's really nice. I want to thank the council and the Planning Commission for the joint session we had last week on February 10th. We actually got a lot out of it. We had six questions to propose to council, and we did get good direction from it. But like everything, you know, staff is continuing to work on it, refine it, and you'll probably be seeing more of me than you want to over the next several months, just because, you know, we're really trying hard to meet the deadline for the lifting of the moratorium, and that's a pretty, that just means that I have to do a whole lot of making sure that we run everything through council as we're going, rather than waiting till we get to those review points, and then council says, wait, go back and look at it again. I'd rather just kind of do it as we're moving. So some of the items that we got questions on was illustrating the residential mix. People said at the meeting, Bob, what does it look like? What does a 70/30 look like? What does a 50/50 look like? Can you give us some examples? So we went around and just looked at three that are local, so that everybody knows them. You've been there, you've shopped there. So you get a good feel for them, right? Rather than showing you something that's in Nebraska or something that you say, I've never been there. I wouldn't know what it is. Although, if you want to fund some trips for me to go there, I won't say no. All right. So we, we looked at those, and then we started looking at more into what is it going to take to really strengthen the amenities that we're really looking for developers to implement at their expense, rather than in the city's expense. And some of the comments were good on public comment, you know, about who's maintaining it and how do we do that. So we'll certainly look at all of those comments as well. So those were great comments. So it's, we're kind of looking at it and saying, what do we need to do? So let me show you where, where we are. Okay, so visualizing the residential and the commercial mix is tonight's concentration. And I want to just go over that Deerfield is not one size fits all. What we got back from the community meetings was they felt that there were four different distinct areas within the Deerfield Form-based code outline, and we've identified those. And there's a northern district, which is up in the top in purple. And it's got a very different character than what's down on the south end in yellow. So I think each one of these character areas will be, will be defined differently, although have continuity and in architecture and, and style, but the requirements for each will be a little different. So with that, I want to show you what we sort of came up with as far as incentives. And I just want to tell the council that in the past week, I did meet with several developers, and some council members have too. But I met with them, and we went through this and said, look, this is what we're proposing. What do you think? Would this be enough incentive? And we got some really good feedback. They actually told us some really good things. And so everything I'm showing you tonight here has kind of been blessed by the development community as far as what they're thinking. So we have north Deerfield, which is really a T4 zone. T4 does allow some light commercial. So you can do some light commercial currently. Because of that restriction, right, of no townhouses and along Highway 9, we're excluding those. And in this scenario, I'm maintaining that exclusion. I'm saying we, we don't want townhouses up in the T4 area. There's one, there's four lots that are next to adjoining that five-acre subdivision that we did do a separate agreement with on the zoning. But other than that, all the other areas in that, in that sub-district would not be allowed to have townhomes. And multifamily would not be allowed. What we're looking to do there is single-family detached lots that would be smaller lots, because it's T4. So it'd be similar to Kinsley. So if you go on Webb Road and you see the Kinsley development, it would look sort of like what Kinsley is. And of course, commercial would still be permitted. So if somebody came in and said they bought the Apple Orchard, which is as you're driving north on the left, it's the one with the gate and the barbed wire. Some people just know it as the Apple Orchard site, sorry. But if you looked at that and said, okay, Bob, you know, it's eight acres, you know, what are they going to do? We've had some interest where people would come in and say, yes, we want some ribbon or liner commercial along the road. You know, we also want housing behind that. So what we're envisioning there is single-family detached on small lots in a little Kinsley, and potentially some liner commercial, light neighborhood-type commercial along the roadway. So that's, that's what that is, and they get five units by right and nine units if they purchase TDRs. And I'm not really incentivizing any of those TDR bonuses there because I don't really want to over-put too much density. If they really want a lot of density up in that area, they'll just have to go out and buy the TDR purchase. The next area is, I put two of them. And the amenities, there's three amenities, the top three amenities that the city, as part of this plan, is really looking to incentivize. So we don't have 20, and you know, there's really three amenities that we've identified. One is to increase the public open space, public open space, from 10%, which is required now, to a 20%. So they're doubling the amount of public open space. And as a result of doing that amenity, we will give them a 10% residential ratio credit. And then the next one would be public access trails and trailhead, which would include a bathroom facility and, you know, some sort of marker that indicates that it's a trailhead, potentially some associated parking that goes along with a trailhead for somebody to come park and then utilize the trail. So there's quite a bit with that. In that one, we're looking to give a 10% residential ratio credit. So if you have 50/50 now, and I give you 10% for the open space, and then 10, that would bring you to 60/40. And then if I give you 10% for the residential ratio on the trails, you'd go to a 70/30 scenario. So the drawings and the illustrations I showed you last Monday for those developments, the ones everybody liked, actually represented a 70/30 ratio. Okay. So the other one, the third one, is parking structures. And just roughly, I mean, we're going to have conditions for all of these, right? But roughly, you'd get, if you build a parking structure for 70% of the required parking, we will, the city will give three units per acre towards the overall credit. So if they have nine, they're going to add three units in there. So they go up to 12 at no cost. So that would incentivize to offset the cost of the parking structure. Now, a couple of other things, okay? There's going to be conditions associated with each one of these, so they can't just say, oh, I gave you open space, you know, I doubled it to 20%. We're going to have a list of conditions, right? We're going to have, say, okay, this is public, you got to put some artwork in it, you got to have access at multiple points, you got to have some amenities. So we're going to list that. So the next time I come back, I'll list all those conditions and then tell you everything that's in there. Same thing with the trails. I don't want somebody coming in saying, I built a trail that's 10 feet long, and all of a sudden that constitutes the credit. We're going to show where we want the trail on the individual property, eight-foot, 10-foot wide pathways, lighting, benches, you know, whatever we show, we want to make sure that we incorporate those conditions in there to ensure that we're really getting the amenity that we want. That would really be great. Okay, other incentives in this T5 area would be, in looking at this, is that townhomes would be permitted as of right. So you don't need a use permit for those townhomes. Okay? And again, we're going to put in conditions on townhomes. We'll have a whole list, and the next time I come back, I'm going to say, if we give them this, this is all the conditions you would need for those townhomes in order to comply with this. Multifamily would still require a use permit. So if, say, Fries or Orkin comes back with a multifamily component, I want them to come back in front of Council and say, this is what we're looking to do, and this is how it looks. So Council could put their oversight on any multifamily, which is, in essence, apartments. And I'd like to make sure that Council has a good look at that. But we're going to put in two criteria that they must also meet, okay? On townhomes and multifamily, for example, we're going to say that if any of those units abut an existing city street, that they have to include a 45-foot linear park along the frontage so that we guarantee that we get that linear park that I was talking about. And that half of any multifamily units that are considered or presented to Council by a development would have to have 55 and older restriction. So it's half the residential units. Now, the feedback I got from developers is that age-restricted multifamily is actually doing very well, selling well, and they were like, pretty much a proponent for, you know, building age restriction. And I think that's important because if people come to Council and say, we want to have apartments, I think it's important for the Council to think about at least 50% of those units would have to be age-restricted. We'll probably restrict the balance to one- and two-bedroom units, too. So we'll put in our restrictions to make sure that we're getting the right. So all those conditions, next time I see you, next time in the next meeting, work session, whatever, I will be showing you that detail. So for tonight, we won't go through that detail, but I'll make sure that we touch base on all of that detail. Then in Deerfield District in T6, we still have the same three amenities because they're so important. It's a little different here because these lots are much bigger. Now, the lots that are in T5 are like 19 acres, 17 acres, 10 acres, so they're smaller. So the 70/30 on a smaller lot really works. It works nicely visually on that balance, and I think I showed you that last week. But when you have a much bigger lot, like 50, 65 acres, even 25 acres, and the fact that all of those lots that have come in have existing office space on them, that's very important to keep in mind. We want to maintain our offices, and they have existing offices. Now, grant you they're vacant, right? But we don't want to get rid of our office space. So what we want to say is if you maintain your office, the existing office buildings, that's a condition, right? You maintain your existing office buildings, we will allow you to do a 60/40 ratio if you amenitize it. So you'll get 5% residential density from 10 to 20 for open space, you'll get 5% for the trails, and you'll get three acres, three units per acre for the parking structure. So, and then townhouses would be permitted as of right, and multifamily would still need a use permit, same restrictions as above. And the key here is we're trying to maintain the existing office space. So if you look at the Twin Towers site, the existing office space has 270,000 square feet. So really, what we're doing is saying, we want a 60/40 with the amenities, but when you look at it, we want you to keep the 270,000 square feet. And so realistically, their pro forma would be to build, say, another 50,000 of retail and residential. So it's not like we're putting a total burden on them to build 100% non-residential because they already have those existing office buildings. And I think we need to maintain those. If somebody comes in with a formula, financial formula, and presents it to Council and says, look what it's costing me, you know, I got all this land, I got to knock down the buildings, I got to build all new stuff, it's a different formula for them. Then they're going to come to you and say, oh, we want, you know, 90/10 because it doesn't work for us financially. But most of the developers, all but one that I've spoken to, that have land in this area have reached out to me just today and said, Bob, we are very interested in this, and we will initiate the development. This, our pro forma works with these numbers. We'd be very excited. We will build parking garages, we will give you green open space that would look nice, we will give you the trails, and we will have a decent amount of retail that's in there based on how much we already have on our office square footage. So those are the pictures that I had shown you last Monday, and they all work. So we, yes, I know we're giving a 60/40, it's like we're giving in for 10%, but they're building these amenities for us that we don't have to do. So we're kind of getting that, we're sort of buying ourselves out of that, and we're incentivizing the parking structure. So we'll come back to this in a minute, I want to show you some visuals that I promised. Okay, let's start with Stone Creek Church. Stone Creek Church, this is their plan, and then I overlaid my plan, so it looks a little fuzzy, but I wanted to make sure it worked for them. And this works for them. So what happens here is, and it works for the community, I put, I'm going to look at rezoning the front portion along Highway 9 to a T5 zone, which is what I had said last week. I said, I'm going to make it all T5. But when I really look at it, I want the back half to be zoned a T4, which is really the single-family detached homes. So nobody, even in the future, would be able to come in, knock down some detached homes, and stop putting up townhomes, or say, oh, we want a multifamily component, or any of that. They would be stuck with just single-family detached homes in that. So most of the land, as you can see, would be T4-zoned, and it works with their plan. I took the T5, I added in the church, and there's retail along the Highway 9, which is on the right. And then the red lines are showing our trail going into the residential so that we get it off of Highway 9, and it supports that retail. And then the trail going to Cogburn is up on top. So by doing this, giving them this, they will not build a parking garage, so they won't get the extra density, but they'll do the other two incentives, and they'll end up with a split that actually works for their density. I did all the math, and everything works the way they presented it. We will, you're losing those couple of houses up in the front, the brown that's in the T5, but I'm adding some townhomes. So it's all sort of balancing. I think they lose like three or four townhomes total out of the whole plan, but I got it all to work. So this is a really nice solution, and I think it works with the 70/30 with the incentives. Okay, so that's that one. And then I want to show you three different mixed-use developments that I think we've all interacted with. Okay, the first one is going to be the Alpharetta City Center. And I think it's really important. Councilmember Kramer looked at me and said, what does the Alpharetta City Center really represent? I thought it was a good question, quite frankly. And I said, you know what, I really need to do all this research. I appreciate that. It was a great, great question. And, you know, what does it look like? So everybody looks, and here's the Alpharetta City Center. The Alpharetta City Center's got 110,000 square feet of commercial, 74,000 of it is retail. When you look at these numbers, they're really good. These are strong numbers compared to what we were seeing on some of the other financial models, saying that you won't be able to support that. We have this, and a total of 168 multifamily units. That's important because a lot of people looked at me initially and said, oh, Bob, you need 250 to 300 units in order to make this work. It just doesn't work. Well, Alpharetta City Center looks thriving, it looks great, I love it, it's four-story architecture, it really works, it's a nice experience to go down there, spend the day, I see a ton of people walking around the area, and I look at it and I say, well, what is that mix? Well, that mix is a 70/30 mix, similar to what I'm asking for on Fries, similar to what I'm asking for on Orkin, and similar to what I'm asking for in the church. So I think that shows that the 70/30 really works, and they don't have, I mean, they had to pay for a lot of some of these amenities themselves. The City of Alpharetta built their own parking structure, and they paid for it. We're trying to give some density to these projects so that we don't have to do that, so we can get that. Okay, so that's that one. Right now, so that's pictures of what it looks like from the air, from the ground, and the actual walking experience. They all look different, don't they? When I look at three of them, I almost don't think it's the same project, so... Okay. Then we looked at Halcyon. Now, Halcyon's a little different because if you notice in the picture on the right, there's Halcyon proper, which to me does represent a good, you know, 70/30 mix, okay? But when you add all those other houses on the bottom part of that picture, the right side, it sort of looks like almost a different development, but because they did it all together, it did add a number of houses. And so, but they're showing almost 400 square feet of commercial, 400,000 square feet of commercial. That's a lot of commercial, right? I mean, these numbers were like astonishing to me. And 448 multifamily, 87 detached, and 155 townhomes. And I think a lot of that's due to the bottom right where they put all those extra houses. So if we were doing this development and we were surrounded by a lot of residential or there's other residential supporting it, I don't think you would have needed it. In this particular area, there's not a whole lot of residential. I'll admit, there's nothing around here but this, so it's, this is really important. So, and again, this is representing an 80/20, but I think if you took out that southern portion, those numbers all change, and all of a sudden you're back to like a 60/40 or 70/30. Okay. Wait a minute, I thought I had, did I miss? All right. We also had, I don't know why I don't have it on here, Avalon. So I'm sorry, it's not on the slides, I don't know what happened. But Avalon has a million and a half square feet of commercial, a million and a half square feet of commercial. And they have 550 housing units, multifamily residential in there. But a million and a half feet is non-residential. So if you look at those ratios, that really works at about a 50/50. That really came out to about a 50/50 split. So that's, but look how much land they have and look at how much retail they put in. I mean, when you go there, you know it's a retail experience, right? You go there for that retail experience. So that's a much bigger, the bigger the lots, the more you can support. That's why my ratios drop. So I'm incentivizing, giving some away to get the amenity, but on the same token, we're not really giving them too much. Okay, so we're back to where we were. Now, I just want you to know that I'm dropping the TDR density in the T6 from 36 to 18 because 36 is totally astronomical. I don't know how we came up with that number when we did this. 18 is much more realistic to max out because I don't want somebody coming in and maxing out. So these are the ratios, and I just wanted to kind of get some feedback from Council tonight on what they think about trying to incentivize these three amenities and put some other conditions, which I'm going to come back and have a whole slew of conditions for each one of these to make sure that all your concerns are addressed. So if we don't have a use permit for townhomes in T5, I have to ensure that we have a whole list of items that when they build it, they have to comply with all those items. So it's almost like, and I want to vet that with Council to say, what do you think? How do you think? Let me show you examples. Is this something you would approve normally? You know, so that we get that feedback, we'll just build it right in. But by eliminating a use permit for townhomes in T5, we're basically saving a developer about four months, five months of time, which is considerable of time. So anyway.
A couple of questions. So is the thought that you're looking to give the smaller properties the opportunity to have a higher residential to non-residential mix simply because they're less destination-oriented, whereas Avalon is so big?
That's right. So on the bigger properties, the more property you have, it's easier to meet. Like Avalon's so big, right? It's easy to meet a 50/50 on Avalon because it's really big, you have a lot of room, so you can get a lot of that. But when you only have like 10-acre site, to try to do that, the commercial just really absorbs everything, and you're really choking yourself out. So the smaller the site, the better the ratio. So it's 70/30 on those smaller sites, which is more consistent with those sub-districts because they're really small or along Highway 9, they're not very deep, you know, they're kind of more linear-faced, that kind of thing. Where the ones in Deerfield, where you have existing offices, we can do a 60/40, so I am chopping 10, but I'm getting the amenity out of it, and I'm also giving the incentive for that parking structure because we really think that we can eliminate all that surface parking that exists today, and it would be worth it for me.
And my next question is, how do these recommendations align to the recommendations from Cooper Carey after their analysis?
I think they're in alignment. They're the ones who provided me these examples and gave me those numbers. So I think it's pretty much now, if you look straight at the financial... consistent with those sub-districts, because they're really small, or along Highway nine, they're not very deep, you know, they're kind of more linear faced, that kind of thing. Uh, where the ones in Deerfield, um, where you have existing offices, we can do a sixty-forty, so I am chopping ten, but I'm getting the amenity out of it, and I'm, I'm also giving the incentive for that parking structure. Because we really think that we can eliminate all that surface parking that exists today. And it would be worth it for me.
And my next question is, how do these recommendations align to the recommendations from Cooper Carey after their analysis?
Uh, I think they're in alignment. They're the ones who provided me these examples and gave me those numbers. So I think it's, it's pretty much, now, if you look straight at the financial study, um, and I'll be honest, it's a little different. The financial study came up and said, well, the max you're gonna absorb in the whole district is like sixty-five thousand square feet of, of retail, so that's, I don't know. When I look at these, these examples, I'm like, wow, we, we got a lot of retail in these, and they're all supported, and people.
When you say the max will absorb, what does, what does that mean?
When you look at like Alpharetta City Center, I mean, they have, look at the numbers. When you look at these, I almost think it's important, it's a hundred and ten thousand square feet just there alone, just in that one complex. I, I, the whole idea of a destination is to have that critical mass of retail. So I think it's worse if you say, I'm only gonna put two ten-thousand square foot retail establishments, because those are just stop and goes. But if you really have enough retail, people will go to it as a destination, and, but it has to have that open space. It has to have that trail component, and it has to have that parking garage component. And I add those components, and I think it's supporting that retail. That's what I'm finding from my research. And we have examples from all around us that it's, it's working with those ratios.
I had one more, but go ahead, I don't have to. So my last one is, have we run the model on the tax implications from these revised mixes? Like, what will that do? How will that?
Oh, sure. Um, we've kind of reached out to Fulton County to see, at what point do they consider a parcel to be commercial? Because we were trying to interested in seeing parcels are typed by one type, so no matter what's on there. And they were stating that, um, if you have mixed use, where you have maybe residential upstairs, commercial downstairs, that parcel would be considered commercial for the purposes of our analysis. So we wanted to include that information, which we didn't know before. That is important, I think, because, um, having that entire parcel be considered commercial will increase that percentage. Um, I've did an analysis going back many years, looking at the North Fulton Cities, looking at Alpharetta, Roswell, Johns Creek, Sandy Springs, and Milton, and looking at how, um, their digest breaks out from a value perspective, and looking at those percentages. Before you take exemptions into consideration, these numbers I'm gonna give to you, and then you can add about two to three percent onto that when you take exemptions into consideration, reduce that residential value by the exemptions that are allotted. But currently Milton is at about, when you take personal property and real property into consideration, at ten percent. So when you add back in those exemptions, we close up to about thirteen percent. Um, you have Sandy Springs at thirty-seven percent when you take real and personal together. And then again, add about three percent. Um, Johns Creek sixteen percent, Roswell twenty-two percent, Alpharetta forty percent. So even with all the commercial we see going on there, you can see that those numbers are we're, you know, we're not that far behind somewhere like Johns Creek, which looks a lot different than us. It's just interesting to see it in that way. So then we were looking at the next step was to, um, we're gonna work with some local people to determine the value of some of these properties and what they bring. Because we're trying to, uh, decide how to best determine what Fulton County would value them at. So we're gonna get per-square-footage values and try to come up with an understanding. We also have to look at what additional residential will be coming into the city, because as we build out in this one area, we still have other things going on throughout the city, so as that commercial percentage may go up, so possibly too may go residential if we build any other developments. So we're still working out those final numbers. But that's where we are now, and any of these parcels, even mixed use, will be considered commercial. I think those are two important key factors.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I think the, the point is, if we're, if we're gonna go through this, and we're gonna get closer to that eighty-twenty that I know was the goal, I guess that's what was stated last week.
The important, I think it's really important to understand that even if we have mixed use, that that parcel, if the parcel stays whole, be considered commercial is super different than what we were originally thinking, so that will further increase that commercial percentage by more than we originally thought.
But eighty-twenty is twenty percent commercial-based income versus eighty percent residential.
Right.
Just to make sure I got that.
Yeah, it's just shifting the tax burden from our residents to the businesses.
And, and I just want the council to kind of just keep this in the back of your heads when these applications come in. We're kind of fortunate. The people in Milton, they already own the land. Right? They already own the office buildings. I know they're vacant, but they own them. So it's not like we're taking raw land and saying, yeah, the pro forma on that would be a little different. I think when the financial consultant looks at it, he's looking at it a little differently. He's looking at, oh, you gotta buy land at fifty million dollars. You gotta build office buildings on another fifty million dollars. That, those, that skews all your numbers. But if you sit there, and then when I talk to the landowners, they go, Bob, we don't really want to knock down these office buildings. They're good office buildings. Why would I want to knock down an office building and build a new office building? I have one. And I have the land, I already own the land. So really, what are you asking me to do? I'm asking, I'm, I'm, I'm cleaning up the parking areas, I'm gonna build a parking garage with the incentive. I'm gonna, uh, build some retail in there and some housing above. And, you know, that, that's really where those, those pro-formal numbers come. It's a whole different approach than other cities have been strapped with. Uh, we're, we're so blessed here in Milton that they all own it. Adam Orkin owns the property, the church has the property, the, the, the Twin Tower people own the property, H Building Site, he, I talked to him, he said, Bob, I own the, I have a half a million square feet of office, yet I know it's empty. But I own it, I own the building. I just want to get some involvement around it to reactivate it. And that's what we're doing here, and those numbers are gonna help them on this sixty-forty. Because they already have a half a million square feet of, of office that he puts into that equation. So when you think of it, it's pretty good. What we're doing is just infilling around it with retail and a modest amount of retail compared to some of these other cities, and some housing, and it reactivates that whole site.
I have a couple of questions. Our, um, commercial in the area, how up-to-date is it? What's the occupancy? Is it modernized inside? Is it up-to-date? What's the?
Uh, all the buildings are very nice up to date. The office buildings themselves. Uh, if you go into the Verizon complex and walk through those buildings, they're all furnished, they're brand-new. They literally updated, um, within the last two, three years. Uh, they're literally, it looks like a ghost town, but it literally is all brand-new. The Twin Towers, same thing. Those buildings are in great shape. Uh, the H Building, he just improved the whole ground floor of the building, he put a, meaning golf, uh, uh, putt-calf. He put all this amenities down, and he's really putting money into that building to amenitize it.
And what's the occupancy currently?
No, all those office buildings are virtually, I'd say, vacant. They really do need some development around them to reactivate those.
And how long have they been vacant?
They've been vacant for a little while. We went through this COVID crisis, and the COVID crisis really drove people, um, to work from home. And so everybody left. That's what happened in there. We had Philips lighting in the H Building, they took, they were a huge occupant. And then Philips said, well, they called me up and said, Bob, you know, it's nice that you came in, we introduced you, but in two months, we're telling all our workers to work from home. In fact, it was really funny, because they had a lease agreement, and they actually paid a lease for the space for like eight months, while all the workers were home. And then finally, in eight months, the lease ran out, and then the owner called me up and said, well, wait a minute, now I'm sitting here with an empty building and no lease. When he, you know, for eight months, he thought, oh, okay, I got money coming in.
Let me ask you a few other questions. So in each of the districts where housing is represented, how many people does that represent as an aggregate? Like at Stone Church, or Stone Creek, excuse me, um, how many, how many families does that represent, and how many school-aged children? What would you extrapolate that to be?
No, I could, I can come back with that number next meeting and tell you how many.
I'd also like to know, what's the capacity of our schools in that area?
Currently, the last, when I spoke to Fulton County, they told me we have capacity available in that area. We are not fully, we're not overcharged, and we're not into, you know, trailers or anything like that. We have capacity in the schools.
Could we get specifics on how much capacity? And what our growth rate historically has been in that area? And what is, what our plan is if we choke the schools?
Okay.
I'd like to see all that numerically laid out.
And that's why I was trying to make, I'm sorry, I was trying to make the, the requirement for housing to be fifty percent of the housing, fifty-five plus. I was a little hesitant in the beginning, but the feedback I got, um, from developers such as like Adam Orkin, he looked at me and said, Bob, they're very, um, favored, looked upon, everything that we have that's fifty-five plus has been absorbed immediately and quickly. In fact, it's going faster than the, the normal.
I don't know people that old.
Oh, it's, it's, the fifty-five plus would be good, because I think when I look at those numbers, what I'll do is I'll, I'll give you the two numbers and say, here, this is half that number would be fifty-five plus.
Yeah, I'd like to know that, because if in change, we can go from fifty-five plus to anybody, and I think it's really important to be cognizant that with everybody we put in an area that's gonna live there, it is gonna be some drain on services. So, and with all due respect, I would dissent with you on one point. I think downtown Alpharetta is an opportunity missed by a mile. And I'm very sensitive to the fact that if we build out, um, even if you take Stone Creek, and I'm very sensitive about property rights and things like that, so um, I understand a lot of this, but if we build out, you know, inch by inch, how's it gonna look any different? I mean, left to right, going up Highway nine, how is it gonna look any different than the things that we see at downtown Alpharetta, Halcyon, Avalon? I mean, really gotta think about this. That drawing is pretty stark.
But I think that's sort of the whole idea of the sub-districts. Right? It's just for them to maintain their own unique character. And that's what I like about the customization and the thought and the iterative approach to, one, what has the feedback been from the community? And we've been to every single one of these events, and spoken with a number of people. The incentives that you're giving the developers, other than the parking garages, no one really cares, but they need the parking garages, but the residents are saying walkability, green space, give me trails. We're incorporating that into the design plan.
I think when we see the, overall, and it is an aerial, and we can see exactly, because cement is cement at the end of the day.
Yep.
Regardless of what people say, at the end of the day, cement is cement, and there's always a lot of regret when there's too much cement.
But I think that's one thing that we're trying to do different. So how does it look different than Alpharetta or coming? I think it's important, we're try, you know, what Bob has in his plans, these linear parks, am I saying that right? The parks that go along Highway nine. So yeah, I think the residents, they want to see a revitalization, they want to have, they want to have their, the term they kept using is, we want to have our neighborhood bistro to go to over there. Like, that was said a bunch of times when we were
It's well-deserved, and that's the whole goal.
Doing our campaigns, right? That's what they want over there. But we don't want it to look like everything else. So when you front it with a park on the front end of it, and you drive through it, and it doesn't look the same as Alpharetta, then it does look more Milton. But they still get those businesses and the amenities that they're looking for.
And look, at the onset of this, we said, we are gonna fight like how to keep Milton Milton. And we're threading the needle here, right? I mean, this is great discussion. Because you're right, we don't want it to look like Alpharetta.
I would just like to see on every step of this an aerial, where we're seeing exactly where the cement is, you know, because it's, it's a little startling.
Did you see the video from last Monday?
I did.
You did, okay.
Did, yeah, did you, I think, I think it was the Orkin property, I think was the most stark of what you're talking about. Like, what, what he could do today would be a sea of concrete. What Bob is proposing is a huge park area to the right, if I remember correctly. Right? And then some housing and stuff. But it was way more what we're looking for than what is available to him to do today.
Just on the schools would be very helpful, yeah.
And I'll bring the, um, architectural characters descriptions the next time I come in. So I'll show you the population projection, I'll show you the architectural characters that we're looking to create, and the open space. I know it's very important.
I think, I think schools, I think schools and police and fire impact also, because we'll need.
You'd have a pretty good police station right there.
And, and honestly, you know, when it comes to services, I know everybody, if you just built all of this and said, okay, you know, what does it do to my current services? I, I, it would be a tax, right? Because you just increased all of that. But you have to remember, all of that, that development is also gonna be generating impact fees, revenue, taxes. So as a result, I think these developments, if they really come in, at the timing, I think they're gonna come in, I think they're gonna help us build the new city park, because we're gonna have all this impact fee money pouring in, and it's gonna like self-propel that, that, the generation of that park.
Bob, on those fifty-five and older communities, are, are they all gonna be leased, or are some of them gonna be owned? Or is it a combination, or is, are you leaving that up to the developers?
Um, saying if it's like a townhouse, it would be owned, but if it's an apartment, it would be leased. And I was worried about that, because I didn't think fifty-five-plus rentals were really gonna sell, you know, rent. But evidently, they're in strong demand. Everybody wants those. It's, we have a lot of people coming in saying, look, you know, I like being in Milton, I don't want to leave Milton, but I don't want forty acres anymore, so. They, they're really populating in there, and I look right now at right across on Bethany, the, um, the Forsyth County line, and that's what he used as his example, and he said, Bob, they're, they're all rented. They went faster. Um, condos in themselves, as far as, you know, units, the feedback I've got honestly is that, that nobody's gonna get financing for condos. Uh, but the rentals are high, they're like three to thirty-five hundred dollars a month minimum for a one, one-bedroom, two-bedroom unit.
The other thing I'd like to see, and it goes kind of along with Carol's thing on the, on the concrete. I know you're working with the Trails Committee somewhat, but I think understanding where the trails are all going here and how they're gonna connect is important for everybody to see and understand. Not only where are their trails, but what are they? Are they cement? Are they gravel? Are they ten-foot, six-foot? How wide are they? Because I, I know when we met with Adam, I, I didn't realize how much he wants more trails. And he believes that more developers want more trails. So I think it's good for us to understand, how's that gonna look in this area? How are we gonna put that together? And it kind of addresses what you were talking about, Carol.
It does. So I'll just briefly, everything the city is responsible for, when we went back to the Trails Plan, was already in the Trails Plan. The council's already approved most of these loops in the trails, and we're actually going through right now, Public Works, I'm working with them every day, and they're actually getting these things developed, uh, and built. Those would be more solid surface, right? Because they're more like, um, concrete sidewalks kind of thing. Those are the ten-foot pathways that we were talking about. Golf cart paths and things. Uh, but I will show you, um, again, we, we, next week I'll duplicate that Monday meeting, where we show you the visualizations of the trails. Most of them are a soft path, have some lighting, some railings, you know, um, signage that say where you are. You identify these are very important. To make sure you know you're on the trail, because you could be on a trail, and if it's not identified and branded, there's no fun being on the trail, so.
I think the other thing is trails versus golf cart paths, and making sure we have an understanding of what we're really looking at. I, I think there's a conception, and maybe a misconception, by a lot of people that live there already, that we're gonna develop all these golf cart paths. And I'm not so sure we are. And I think we just need to put that out and make sure there's an understanding of if there's gonna be some, where would they be? And is that really the way we're going, or is it really more bikes and walking and jogging and stuff, and really not golf carts?
Right. And, and a lot of developments like Orkin's development, the ten-acre site, he's got a buffer in the back that's required by code, and what we're looking to do is uh, we're gonna present reducing that buffer a little, but also allowing him to put a soft trail, public trail through it. Right now, the code does not allow that. They say, if you have a buffer, you can't put a trail through it. So we're looking to change, that will be one of our text amendments that I bring into you, that says, we are looking, so that trail would actually split. So as you're coming down, if you're on a golf cart, you'd drive past his retail, right? But if you're on a bicycle, you can dive into the back of the property, so it's quiet and protected, and, and enjoy that experience. I'm working very closely with Adam Orkin and his, um, two, two sons on exact, they've got a lot of experience on trails, and I'm really working with them day to day to say, is this something that's, you know, supported? Is this something that we should do? I'll bring them back in. So I'll, I'll bring back those trails to show you exactly what it is. Thank you.
Great.
Good, thank you very much.
All right.
Great update, Bob, thank you.
Yeah.
There are no first presentations, public hearing, zoning agenda, or unfinished business items. Moving on to new business. Bernadette, please sound that item.
Our first and only new business item is consideration to hold a conservation easement for ascending-site property in the city's Transfer of Development Rights TDR program located at twenty-two hundred Birmingham Road. Agenda item number twenty-five zero four four. The zoning manager is Robin McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and City Council. Um, tonight, as Bernadette stated, we're gonna presenting to you a consideration to hold a conservation easement for ascending-site property in the city's Transfer of Development Rights, or TDR, program. Uh, tonight, I'm just gonna, uh, go through some different points, the background of the program. Tonight, I'm just going to go through some different points, the background of the program, current status of it, the review of the actual conservation easement at 2200 Birmingham Road, next steps for the conservation easement, and any questions you might have. Just as some background, the TDR program was adopted in June 2012 within the Crab Apple Form Based Code, and subsequently in Deerfield Form Based Code in 2013. At the time, the purpose was, and still is, to encourage the voluntary redirection of future growth from areas where Milton wanted reduced development into areas designated for development. Open space TDR sending sites or easements remain under private ownership permanently, limiting future development such as further subdividing into more lots, more density. In return, for voluntarily participating, private property owners receive TDRs, which can be transferred for use at designated receiving sites, such as the Deerfield area or Crab Apple area. This is done through a private sale, like that of traditional real estate transaction. The city does not have any part of that, we just deal with the administration once the transaction is done. There are criteria that are required per the code to create these TDRs. The property needs to be at least five acres in size, zoned AG1 or T2 within the Crab Apple or Deerfield Form Based Code areas. It must contain natural or agricultural features whose retention would implement the city's goals for maintaining significant environmental areas, rural character, and open space. Tonight, we're looking at a specific site that is requesting TDRs to be created, and the applicant is Yana Chevalier. And the property is 6.7 acres in zone AG1, as you can see on the map. It's within the rural Milton overlay, and there is an existing house, structure housing animals, small greenhouse, and a riding area. It's located at the northwest corner of Birmingham Road and Henderson Road. Just here's some pictures of the property. It's primarily pasture land with the northwest section heavily wooded with both pine and hardwoods. These attributes contribute to Milton's rural viewshed along both roads of Birmingham and Henderson. So tonight, staff is asking the council to hold the conservation easement for this property at 2200 Birmingham Road. The city attorney has reviewed the conservation easement and is ready for your decision tonight. And I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you might have.
So I have a question. So isn't it customary to know where the trade is?
I'm sorry?
So if you're putting this in conservation easement, the benefit then accrues to whom?
So in, it is to the benefit of the property owner that's putting it in the easement, because they have, in this instance, has seven TDRs, if it's approved, tonight, and then they sell those TDRs to a landowner who is seeking to increase their density, either in Deerfield or in Crab Apple. And so in this instance, there is a specific purchaser, and that's why that it's come before you. But again, that's a private transaction.
So is that conservation in perpetuity?
Correct.
Okay, and so this-
...of its bundle of sticks, yes.
All right. So then if, over time, if the house is no longer needed or wanted, can it be rebuilt?
Yes, so basically, yes, so in fact, in this situation, any five acres can have a house, can have a guest house, can have a pool, any of the accoutrements that you would have on any single lot, they are permitted to do on that property. It's just the biggest thing that they give up is the right to continue to subdivide or to sell it. They can sell it in the future, but it has to remain in the same way of one lot. But they can't continue to subdivide it into, let's say, four or five lots in the future. So that is what we saw as, when the program was created, was we wanted to encourage larger lots and, you know, help hopefully preserve some of the horse farms and take that density that would have been possibly developed and put it into the areas like Deerfield or Crab Apple.
Okay, and is the transaction between the two parties, is that a private matter?
It is.
Is the price published and taxed?
After it's closed, it would be public information, so, yeah.
Councilmember, Section 7 in your packet of the, identifies the existing uses, or despite the property going into, and Robin's correct, the main, the main key benefit is family resident with maybe some minor modifications, respect to that, even maybe some ancillary structures that would be ordinary and customary, respect to a single residential structure, a division's gone.
I know we have a very small TDR bank, correct?
Well, currently, this will be only the second owner. The first person who did the TDRs, he kind of had the monopoly on it, and I can go into more detail about that if you'd like. I have that information, but I-
I think I know.
Yeah, okay. But I mean, there's currently, I think, 21, 22 TDRs, and 17 of those TDRs have been sold to six different projects, of which four have been in Deerfield and two in Crab Apple, so.
How big was this piece of property again?
I'm sorry?
How big was this piece of property again?
6.7 acres.
Any other questions?
No, it's very educational.
Thank you, Robyn.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Robyn.
Bernadette, is there any public comment?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, is there any council discussion? Do I have a motion in a second?
I make a motion, we approve item number 25-044.
Second.
Okay, we have everybody to, we have a motion from Councilmember Kirkley, and a second from Councilmember Kramer. Please vote.
Loading is open.
One doesn't belong.
All right, all votes are in.
And we are unanimous. Moving on to council reports, does anybody have any reports?
I do.
Okay.
I would like to welcome our youngest member, our youngest visitor here tonight. Gwen Johnson is in the back, and she's just been so patient and so nice, and I just, she's so grown up, and is very nice.
Any other comments? We will now adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel, land acquisition, and impossible litigation. Do I have a motion in a second?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second, second.
Wait, you have the vote. Please vote on your tablets.